You're all ready to run.
Okay, we'll start this special finance committee meeting December the 15th, 2015. That's 1:00 PM. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the November the 18th, 2015 minutes. I'm assuming that all of you've had a chance to review and reflect on those.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve them. And we have a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? You have same privilege. Okay, item number two is we're gonna have a review of the dispatch amended budget for fiscal year 2015-2016. Tracy?
Yes. The last meeting, we discussed the deficit. Dispatch was in as of June 30th. There's two numbers that were thrown out there. One was 22, almost 23,000. The other one was almost 67,000. The 60,000 is the general fund, or not, sorry, the dispatch fund deficit, and that includes all the liabilities or accounts payable, your personal vacation time, but that also includes the 23,000 that was deficit on the actual checking account, cash. Yes, thank you. So here is, I think we passed these out last time, just to kind of, so I was just giving an update on that, and I did send to the fiscal court the amount that they're liable for, or the interlocal agreement. And here's a copy of that letter. Did you accidentally pay out of his pocket?
I got it.
He did, he did.
I'm done, I'm done.
Okay.
He's got that in his front pocket.
Okay. Next is the auditor. She finished the report. This shows the fund balance, and like I said, it also includes the 23,000 cash, so you know where these numbers come from. Okay. So next is the budget. I didn't realize they already had it in the pocket, so anyone who...
Yeah.
They amended budget.
This is what they just submitted.
Yeah, this is what they submitted last Tuesday. Okay. And then I also did a comparison, which is in the packet, because I don't have it, the original budget that was submitted versus the amended budget.
I'm good, I got it.
Did you cut down all of the trees?
I'm sorry. I don't like to waste, but I didn't realize there was two tickets. Okay. I have some areas of concern. When I was handed it that night, and I kind of, I didn't realize that Jeff Lear was going on the end, I'm sorry, because I said something about the figures and the payroll, but I just kind of want to go over it line by line, or not line by line, but some of the bigger line items that were put on the amended budget. The first one being the federal grant money of $133,375. Prior to that, it was $118,375, but according to the grant, because 65,000 was spent, so really, there's only 115,375 left of that budget, or I'm sorry, of that grant money that's supposed to come in. So I'm not for sure why it went up from $118 to $133.
The credit condition grants for...
Well, we've got, we had another $2,500 grant that just came in from, I can't remember the business we got that from, specifically for whether, or whether...
But does that have to do, I took an early assumption it had to do with this grant.
It should. I'm thinking on that one, the 62,125 is what we actually used out of that grant money. The other 3,000, which made the 65,125, is actually came out of the budget, so it should have been 60...
So then the original figure, 118, was correct?
I think so.
Okay.
And they're watches, so you have your revenue and your expense.
You do, but if you're not getting this much grant money coming in, it's not...
I don't know why they chose to...
It will actually be, it will actually be 180,500.
Right, but you've already spent 60-something of it.
Well, but that's coming back.
That has already come back.
No. This is from Interloc Cad. We stopped that project, and I wish I...
Well, that may not have come back, but if you've already, I guess, if you've already spent 60-something thousand of it, I guess it's where I'm missing, because I wasn't, you know, I wasn't here with all this...
Yeah, it will still be, that grant amount will still be 180,500.
Okay. But I guess when Mike did this part of the budget, he was looking at, okay, you've already spent 63, you only have 118 left.
Technically, that would be true.
Yeah, I see where you're coming from there.
Let me have a traction protocol here. This is a committee meeting, with all due respect, when she asked a question and directed to her, according to our protocol and Robert's rules, she's the one who has to talk, because this is a committee meeting, it's not an open discussion meeting. So it has to be, because if not, then Barney's gonna get me. So it's not an open discussion, she's directing a question directly to her. It's not like an open discussion type of committees. Who chooses a question to can answer. Okay, go ahead.
Do you want to ask for that again?
Okay. If there's only 118 left, then why is it showing 133 up here in the grants?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking where else that would have come from. Is the difference...
The difference of 15,000.
The only thing I know of would be from Code Red. Let me, yeah, but the, we didn't, we're not gonna, if we don't paint it. Can you move on to something else?
Yeah, we can go on that time. Landline money went from 146 to 162.
I'm sorry, where I went?
The contract service revenue, 48,000, 46,500, went from 146,350 to 162,800.
That's the landline.
Right. So what was the, what made you increase that?
Because we got more than 146 last year. It was 146, was the original? We found that on here. What would that be under?
Let me, Barney here is gonna keep us where we are not in trouble.
Violation of the Open Meetings Act.
Exactly.
Just, it is my job, gentlemen and ladies, to understand that in a special meeting, special call of meeting, such as what the finance committee meeting is, that only those subjects that are limited to the agenda are to be discussed, and only those members of the committee are allowed to speak unless called on.
Under the Open Meetings Act?
Mm-hmm.
I disagree with you on the latter.
Which latter?
The latter, that only those that are involved as a committee member can speak.
Unless you're invited to speak.
Recognized by the chair.
Yes, you're recognized by the chair.
And that's part of the Open Meetings laws?
Yes, sir. Because you're considered a public entity, public attendance, you're not part of the committee, so you're treated just as if a member of the public.
A citizen member.
Yes, exactly.
And a citizen member cannot speak at special meetings.
Exactly.
That's wrong.
Well, I can, if you'd like for me to point it out after the meeting, I'll be happy to share it with you. Sure. I'll do that.
But right now, we're gonna go by that, because I'm not gonna be in violation of open meetings and then be there, so. Okay. Ms. Tracy, go ahead, you go to the floor.
Debbie is here.
I'm studying. The 162,800 is what we do anticipate from landline, from 146,350.
So who put the original number in there, 146? Was that you and Monte or...
I honestly don't remember, Tracy, to be honest with you.
Okay. There's just a few hundred dollars difference in the cell phone, and then, of course, the city support came down 24 because of the utility costs. In the letter to the mayor and the judge, you had asked for us to keep it until June 30th, and that you mentioned you reduced the payroll cost.
Yes.
The payroll actually went up on the salaries and wages. Now, the overtime did go down by 6,000. I know that one employee retired.
One employee retired and one employee resigned.
Resigned. Did you take that into effect into the salary and wages?
Yes.
Okay. When you have payroll, then you have to shoot down to social security, you left alone.
Yep.
Retirement, though. I'm not for sure why that went down, because it's non-hazardous, so it's 17-point-something percent, and based on that, you're looking at about $80,000.
Wouldn't it still be 2,000, 2 people less, though?
But you have to base it on the wages. You have to count for the salaries, wages, and overtime.
Oh, so you just take the percentage from that?
Yeah.
Okay, I got you.
So that should be around 80.
Okay. You said overtime was down 6?
Yeah, it is down about, roughly 6,000. But then the regular salaries and wages went up for your full-time.
Right.
Workers' comp was lower to 1,500. That's also based on, I just wish that's $350, but I probably would have left that alone, just because when you look at the smaller line items, really, just if you go up in one, and you're, if you're over in one, but you're under in another, they're gonna kind of wash.
I don't know. I guess it depends on how much the wash is. I don't know.
Well, and then office and technical supplies were down 1,900, but then you bumped up the cleaning supplies to 1,800.
You know, I tell you, I have a real hard time with those two items in that, the way that I purchase them. The one thing that's different now is that we don't have a printer that I used to have to buy cartridges for. I know that's not a big deal, but it's several hundred dollars over the course of the year, so that was one of those issues. And it's a matter of where you take that money from. Is it technical and office supplies? And then if I go to Walmart and get cleaning supplies, and I bought technical supplies at the same time like that, then what I've done is I've tried to split those on the bill, and that gets kind of...
Okay, and that would be another one of those numbers that would actually go out and wash if you were over and under.
Okay.
I guess my concern is if your expenses, I guess my biggest was the grant money.
Well, I never have understood the deal with the grant money, because to me, it's 180,500, and I know you have to count it somewhere, it has to be...
You spend it first, and we get reimbursed later.
Reimbursed, yes. And that reimbursement should have come through for us, because what happens is, is the grant money from CMRS, you're right, we spend it, and then I send for the reimbursement, and I sent that from CMRS. And we all got that back. Really, that shouldn't even be counted as a deficit, because I'm gonna get that money back, which will go back to CMRS.
That's not a deficit, but I did speak with Carrie, and she said we did get that 60-something.
Yes.
So really, you only have the 118 left, so it still shouldn't be at 133.
But how could I have 118 left if I got the 62,000 back? And I started with 180...
Well, you're still gonna spend it down here, but it...
No, I'm not. It's nowhere in here.
I thought that's what the technical equipment was for.
It would be if I had a CAD, but I don't have a CAD. I haven't spent it.
But isn't the grant money based on the purchase of the CAD?
Yes.
So it's in the budget to be spent.
But if we were reimbursed the 62,000 from CMRS, then why would it be...
That's in last year's, that was spent last year.
So the carryover is the... But I...
This is the leftover money that was carryovered in the grant, 118,375.
Nope, that's not right.
It is if we've gotten reimbursed for almost 63.
But I haven't spent any of it. Why wouldn't it be 80,500, 180,500? Only people that are out that money right now are CMRS. I think.
Little billing, 72208, 62125, that was spent in last year's budget.
62,125, yeah. And this money, so this money came out, but it was reimbursed, right, from Interloc?
Right. But the grant paid for that, so therefore, you only have 118,000 of the grant money left.
No, I don't get that. I mean, I'm not a real math whiz, but I don't get that.
Let's follow me up.
Does anybody, does everybody get that what I mean?
He's a chair.
Judge, do you have something?
Yes.
I would just say that if you've received the 62,000 dollars through reimbursement, you have 118 left. But you understand what I'm saying?
It's not a...
The total, the total of the original grant was 180.
180,500.
You spent 62,000.
But I got 62,000 back.
Okay, but you, so you only have 118 left to spend in the new budget year. So you're splitting budgets.
So that's a problem, because I can't get a CAD for 118,000.
Right.
But regardless, but she's talking about strictly the numbers.
Right, so really, this should have stayed 118, and we would have left the 133.
Tracy's right.
Is that the whole amount that you're spending on the CAD system?
Nope. 180,500.
Okay.
Okay, you're...
What's left?
I'm just saying.
No, what's left of it is 133,375, so therefore, you would...
It's hard for you.
So therefore, it's 15,000, 16,000 that is gonna have to be paid by the city and the county.
Okay.
Is what's gonna happen.
Okay.
But it doesn't balance the budget, so that's, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Okay. Okay.
I guess that's really all I had. The rest of it's kind of just...
Our minds clear on that?
Not at all. I suppose we'll talk later.
We'll talk later.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Anything else, Tracy?
No, sorry, that was it.
Anybody else have any questions on item two on the agenda? All right, the audit of the report, item three, I'm going to refer to the letter.
I didn't make the call this late.
All right. What, did you want to do it, Tracy?
I don't mind. It came in, it's something that doesn't show in the audit report, and basically, our auditor said, and I'm sure the judge is aware, that when you do an audit, they tell you, your internal controls, this is what you need to work on, here's your management response, what are you gonna do to fix it? And one of them was internal controls for the E911 fund need to be strengthened. Basically, she said that they had exceeded accruals for payroll and payables made at year-end, all these were in excess. There was an unexpected loan from Nelson County Fiscal Court for equipment purchase in the amount of $40,549, and then salaries for E911 exceeded the budget by $86,000, and then periodic reviews of the budget to actual amounts were not performed, is how she sees it. And so she recommends that someone needs to be more control over how the dispatch spends money on the financials, and I guess someone needs to be able to say, okay, you're spending too much, or it's what, is what I got from it.
And the, the problem is that the city has no control over the operations of the dispatch.
I guess by not having, since we are doing the financial budgeting, or not the budgeting, but the financial control and wiring the checks, it kind of puts us in a pickle where we're responsible at this point in time. And somebody has to be there, I guess you could say, the good stewards and the watching of the money. Because we're, what is the deficit now for the dispatch?
For November, it was 66,000 in cash, but some revenue came in in December for the landline, so it's right at getting around 22,000, 23,000. And that's cash in the bank.
And when that's, when it's like that, the people that's using, dispatch uses the city as, as the bank to pay the bills. And I have a hard, I have a hard problem with going into a debt of the city taxpayers up to a 70, would you say 66,000 or 70?
67,000.
67,000. 67,000, and we still, we still have to, we still have to write the checks and balances.
Well, I thought we had some discussion on that dispatch was gonna do that, take care of the own check.
We did, but then the board, and the board with Debbie had said, had sent a letter to the fiscal court and to the city council and mayor requesting that we keep them on it until June 30th.
So yeah, the, the decision by this committee, and whenever we last met, was to recommend that the, that the city stop doing, being a financer and being, using our checking account for the financing of the dispatch, since we had the liability for the finances, but we had no control over it. And so we sent a letter to the dispatch board saying that, that as of January 1st, we were gonna, we needed to stop doing that, and that we would offer them, helping them setting up their, their own financing system, and that we would advance them the rest of the, the money that are 40%, based on this year's budget, so that they would have offering money to start January 1st with. Then subsequent to that, we received a letter from the dispatch board, while we were all at the, several of us were in a meeting last week, where there were a number of resolutions by the board. One of them was to adopt this budget, which, which has some questions related to it. Another was that the, rather than the dispatch board take over their own finances as of January 1st, that the, that the county take over the finances, but not until July 1st. And the, and the request was made that the city continue to be in our, to maintain our current role with regards to finances until July 1st. And so, we've been talking about that. And if it's appropriate, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read a, a response to that letter, because time is kind of short. Here, we're in December, and things are busy, but we've, you know, we've had this, this letter out for a little while about the January 1st deadline, so, so this is in response to the, to the letter from the board to the, to the mayor, asking for us to continue our arrangement until July 1st. So in the letter of December 10th, 2015, the city was asked to keep the finances and payroll function for the E911 board until July 1st, 2016. Because of the city auditors and the city attorneys' concern over having both the responsibilities and the liabilities of such arrangement without direct control, the city will consider keeping the finance, finances under the following conditions. The city will contract to provide administration and payroll services to the E911 board. Administer all personnel services to the E911 board, including payroll, health insurance, retirement, FICA, hiring, firing, and discipline. Under this arrangement, all employees of the dispatch board would become city employees until a new interlocal agreement can be signed by the city and the county, either before or after July 1st, 2016. The board would have to amend its bylaws to allow this, these services to be contracted for. The city council would have to pass an amendment to the classification and compensation ordinance providing for the positions and grades and ranges for the dispatch employees. And the city and the county would both have to consider a realistic E911 budget for 2015-16, that's the year we're in, and the city would be responsible to operate the dispatch center within that budget, or go back to the city and county if unforeseen circumstances required it to be amended. And this arrangement would only last until either the city and county amended the interlocal agreement, but in, in any case, it would have a sunset date of either July 1st, 2016, or the end of September, 2016, when the extension of the interlocal agreement ends. So the answer to the letter is, yes, we will, we will do it, but we can't operate the finances of the E911 board with no control over the spending, but the responsibility to pay the bills. So that's, the mayor, does that reflect what, what we talked about? And of course, this would have to be the recommendation of this committee to the city council, and then the city council would have to agree to it, the 911 board would have to agree to it, and I suppose the county would if it, if it would require an amendment to the, which I don't think it would, to the, to the interlocal agreement. And of course, this is all a, a response, knowing that the 911 board has already asked the county fiscal court to take over the, the operation and the fiscal responsibility for the 911 board. And so, looks like between now and January 1st, probably sooner rather than later, the dispatch board would need to meet and decide whether, which, which way they want to go. Because there's also the option that the board could take care of its own finances after January 1st.
This is a attempt to get the control of spending in control. And it is for a temporary solution to a bigger problem in which Dean and I have discussed. And if I, if I can speak for you too, Dean, is that I, we're not, we're not wanting to split this, this dispatch, is not, is not what we're wanting to do. We're wanting to keep it together, but it's gotta be, it's gotta be financially responsible, and the way I see it right now, it is not. And I don't think it's fair for the city taxpayers to keep being the bank for an independent type of board. So. If there's no objections, Coach Will, I know Dean Watson wants to say so.
Please, sir. First, the city council adopted a budget on, in your budget years, showing, you know, within a few dollars of this budget, give or take a, you know, a few bucks, okay? You adopted that budget, and for X number of years, the city's, the city has provided the service, it's the current services to the dispatch center, right since 2007 or '08, I believe is what it was. And every year, we adopted, now mind you, sometimes we got that budget late, and we all had frustrations with that, I understand that, and that can be corrected, and pardon that responsibility of us as governmental entities not demanding those numbers. Okay? The second thing is, we have other services, Mayor, City Councilman, that we fund, with a joint agreement with the city, like planning zoning. We carry, the county carries the note on that during the whole fiscal year, does all the payroll for them, does all the payroll-related expenses for them, similar to this. So for an auditor to make a statement, and I can see why they made a statement because of some unusual circumstances with this 911 dispatch center, with the, with the drop in the telephone bill revenue, it, it puts a crunch on everything. And we, none of us caught that, to be honest with you, the last couple of years. We heard it was going down maybe 10,000, 5,000 here, all of a sudden, in one year's period, it went down almost 100 grand. None of us could catch that. Now, going to, to lay the, I don't think the spending that dispatch is out of control. I think there's some spending that we need to get a better handle on when we approve the budget each year. When we approve that budget, we're approving, approving that spend from fiscal court perspective. And, and we do planning zoning like this, and to get, to say we're gonna control one entity over, have total control of the dispatch center, so you can hire and fire people what will, I think it's wrong. And for the dispatch to go out on its own, and, and these, these employees become a private entity, where they gonna get their health insurance? Where they gonna get, you throwing the employees under the bus? Where they gonna get their retirement fund? And they belong to the city retirement and be in the independent group? Did you ever get that, funds out of Cutter Morris's boy, the, what's his name?
Rich.
Rich?
Rich Morris.
Did you get it?
They can apply to be an agency, and they fit all the criteria to be an agency that could fit into the retirement system.
Okay. I know they have. I know they have, fire departments are like that, too.
Yeah, just have to apply, and, and it has to go before the retirement court.
But I don't, I don't think we got a big problem.
It's not a super big problem, the spending's not out of, completely out of hand. It, it has grown and mushroomed, and we need to get a hold of it, I understand that, but just to fill them, what the, what the bigger speed, fill the baby out with the bathwater, I think is wrong.
I think you fill the baby out, you might fill the old bathwater out, but not the baby.
I think there has to be government oversight, but not complete government oversight. I'm talking about one government over another. It's been a joint venture for years, and what I see is-
And I want to keep it that way, as a joint venture, but-
But with these directives that, in that letter-
They're not permanent.
I know, but with these directives in that letter, you can go in there, and you have total control employee hiring and firing in that letter. I read it that way. Now, did I hear something I didn't?
No, no, you did, and that's exactly what the dispatch board asked the county to do, was to take it over and have that discretion.
And we said no, because it should be a joint venture.
This is, this is only a solution to keep from having the dispatch board to go on their own January 1st.
Why can't you keep it like it is until June 30th, and then give us some time?
The city attorney, the city, the city auditor, and the finance committee-
You can say all you want to.
Well, I am gonna say all I want to, Judge, I mean, what, what do you mean, I can say all I want to? What, what an odd thing to say.
A bureaucrat can do whatever they want to say to, to not get something done.
No, hang on, but what we're doing is, we're going by what our auditors are telling us, and what our city attorney is telling us.
I'm not saying they're wrong, I'm not saying they're wrong, but why would you want to change it for six months, to get control, six months?
Well, no, it's gonna be-
He just said he want control.
It, somebody's gotta overlook the finances and, and oversee the operation of which we know that it's not going very well at all. Then, once we do that, then we, you and I, Dean, can set, can sit down with another council member, another magistrate, or whatever you want to do, or we, or we can order a bucket of chicken, and the magistrate and the, and the council, if you can get together in here, and eat chicken, and, and talk about it, and get it ironed out. The goal here is to get it under control and keep it together, not to split it, because neither one of us are gonna benefit out of this.
So you're saying that they're out of control, dispatch board's out of control? I disagree with that, Mayor, respectfully, respectfully.
I, I think, maybe not in the sense that maybe that the news media's gonna put what I said, but I'm just saying that it, it needs more restraints.
Circumstances have changed, that, that's out of their hands. And you lose a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand dollars in a budget cycle or two, and that's ten to fifteen percent of your budget and revenue, that's gonna affect how you, bottom line looks.
And it, and it does, and it does, and you're right, it is-
And we didn't catch that, and one of us caught that.
It is out of their hands, and, and with all respect, maybe, I know you're having trouble with the, with the, with the budget, I understand you're having trouble with that and understanding it. Alls I'm saying is, since we've been doing it, let us cradle it, keep you informed, not that us, we have full control, the control is not it, is to get it back in line, is all I'm wanting to do. It's, I think it's out of line, I think it's, needs a direction, and you'll be right, and I'll keep you totally informed.
The deal is hiring and firing.
Well, we take that out, if something happens, then I can come to you and say, what do you think? What if the board wants to-
Is this the first time that this letter that Larry read, is this the first time y'all had this, Dean?
Well, we just found out yesterday that the, that, that the court wasn't going to do what the dispatch asked them, and so what I wrote is about-
It's not fair to the city.
It's about forty-five minutes old, I mean, I, I wrote this literally, because we're trying to come up with a way that we can avoid having the dispatch board go on their own, which is what this committee, the last directive we had, and it's not coming from a bureaucrat judge. You, as a politician, know that lots of people can make, can say things that they can stop things. So, I mean, if we're gonna call names, if you're gonna call me a bureaucrat, I'm gonna call you a politician. But anyway, this, it's, the last thing we heard from this committee was that, that we were gonna let the dispatch board do their own finances as of January 1st. The dispatch board said that's gonna be a real problem. This is a possible solution to that. It's not something they have to accept, they can say, no, we don't want to do that, we don't want to have, be under the city, we want to be under the county, but we don't want to be under the city. The county doesn't want it under the city, but it doesn't want it under the county. It can be all by themselves, which is what this committee asked for, but that involves some work, somebody's got to get up and do something about it, because it's not right the way it is, the city is on the hook for their-
Well, I think the committee agreed with that after the auditor brought this to attention, and that's what they came up with, let, let the dispatch board do it. Doesn't look like that's gonna work at this time. So, take this letter, and let's, let's, let's look at it, what, what needs to be changed? What, I, I don't know what we, the board, or, or the county, or even the city-
What I'm saying is, we're already doing the financing, we're already doing the retirement, we're already doing everything with it, let us run with it, train, uh, train Debbie even more on the budget for them, you know, because I know you've offered several times. I'm not wanting full control, it needs to be joint, it needs to be together-
I agree.
And, and it has to be, and I'm, and I'm looking and telling you in your eyes, and I'm telling you, it's not because of the words of hiring and firing is in there, it doesn't mean that, that, that we can work this out, we can rearrange that language. But you, or us, is gonna have to take this, January 1, and, and work it out, and run the finances on it, and control the finances of it.
I'm willing to work with Tracy on that, if you'll like.
Right, but it has to be, you either gotta be in control of it, and like, your captain do it, or we gotta be in control of it. And just, just for immediate, just for a temporary deal, until we can work on an interlocal agreement, on how the finances are gonna be done, and how it keeps, and how this budget's gonna be reworded.
Mayor, I totally agree with you on the finance side of it, totally agree with you. That we can work together on that.
Absolutely, we can.
Okay, so, if we can find some common ground here, first of all, we need to make certain that everybody's provided a copy of this, it'd be really nice. And if, if there are some concerns, we need to find out what they are, after you meet with your magistrates, and, and just meet again, but we need to, we need to make this work-
Thank you.
For the community.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And I agree, so what's gonna have to happen is, is by January, y'all, we gotta, we gotta come up with something. We're under, we're under, we're under the, we're under the knife here, and we gotta, we gotta do something, so.
Chairman, back in your hands.
Okay, thank you. Are all minds clear on, well, as clear as that can be right now?
What's that mean again?
Okay, item four, committee's recommendation to council is that, everybody revisit this, and then we'll discuss again, or?
Well, what I'd like to do is, is within the, this, rest of this week, I will come up with rewording of that, that Dean and I can-
I'll sit down with you, Mayor, we'll go line by line.
Absolutely. Not on the, not on the budget, but I'm talking about on the wording of this, who's gonna, who's gonna take and cradle this, until we can come up with a solid interlocal agreement that's gonna take-
That'd be the next step, though, isn't it, Mayor?
That would be the next step, is that the way you'd like to handle that?
Yeah, I, I, our main, our short-term goal is to keep this board functioning and have somebody doing their payroll to June 30th.
And have, and have somebody, yes. So, we're gonna, I'll come up with some verbiage, we'll toss it back and forth, and I'll have this, and, and we'll, we'll get that in line, but somebody's gotta, somebody's gotta take this, either you or the city has gotta take this and cradle this, and carry it, and if you want, I don't like the word control, because I don't like that word, but manage it. The county or the city will be the managing partner of this and, and do that. Now, I don't like the word control, but we're gonna have to, you're gonna have to do that, and somebody's gonna have to be in control and get this done. And the word, the verbiage of it, we'll, we'll pass it back and forth, and we'll get something worked out, and by January 1, that way, we can, we can take care of these employees, and take care of the dispatch, because it is a vital part of the community. Yes, and all emergency services have to happen.
Say one more thing, Mr. Chairman. What would be wrong with taking and leaving the dispatch center the way it is for a while? Contract, the dispatch board would contract with either the city or the county for financial services, and, or management services. Fill that out.
That's what was in that, what was in that paper.
Yeah, but, but management service don't mean you can hire, can have, hire and fire people.
That, those are words, we can change stuff around.
Okay, thank you.
You know, some, if there, if there has to be, if there has to be, then, if there is a, we just, somebody has to be and watch it and control it, and if there's one, then you and I can work that out.
I will do that, I'll work on it today.
Yeah.
Just wanted to throw something else out, I mean, I think part of the problem, and in the past, before Tracy was there, we, we were getting the reports at the board, I go to most news meetings, we would get our financial reports, be two to three months behind, very difficult to see where you are in fiscal year, when, when they're, and there was very little detail, the stuff that you did last time was pretty good.
Those are given out monthly, so.
We never got-
They go to Debbie, and then, I mean, I know now that they're giving out monthly, I wasn't-
Well, that's what I meant prior, prior to you, so, but, and that's what allows things to slip as far as payroll and out of whack. The other, the other thing that got us out of whack last year was the estimate that Mike gave us, and I say us, the board, on retirement, was pretty far off. That was about thirty thousand dollars of the deficit. So it's, it's really hard to track it when they're not in a timely manner, and if, if everybody's watching it, you get these things on a monthly basis, then it's not really that difficult to see when things are going haywire. I think that's a really big part of the problem that happened last year.
I think that's part of the problem, is that when, you know, when I got it, that's why I brought it to the mayor's office, I said, what the hell am I supposed to do? There's sixty-six thousand, you know, in the hole.
I agree.
And that's what kind of started all those.
And then that's where, at sixty-six thousand dollars in hole, the city's taxpayers shouldn't be, we can't use the city taxpayers' money as a bank for a individual group.
And there are times when it's, when it's over, too, and, you know, you're happy to keep that in there.
We're gonna work on that budget, and-
I agree, because you'd be right.
It will be tighter than that next time.
Yeah, prior years past, it has had an excess which would stay into the dispatch fund, but as of June 30th now, the fund itself is in a hole.
I just don't want no more spending that, if somebody wants a new radio, hypothetically, if somebody wants a new radio, or we got another antenna, or whatever, they just gonna do it without any fiscal responsibility, with no POs, and that's what we're getting into.
At all those meetings, if you look through the budget for the last several years, most of those things were pretty close to in line. And as far as not having any oversight, I mean, you've got the chief of police that votes and approves all its spending, all the excess spending, the chief of police, fire park, fire chief, they are there at all those meetings. That's not where the problem, we're running the problem, not with cap equipment or anything like that, it was almost exclusively payroll, retirement, insurance, and those were estimates, big ticket items, the estimates were given to them, you know, through here, we know-
Before Tracy.
Before Tracy.
And that was what the auditor said, she said that last year's salaries went over by ninety thousand, so if your salaries run over by ninety thousand, seventeen percent of that's retirement.
But healthcare shouldn't be over thirty thousand.
But the problem, I think the problem what you have now, is you have a board of how many people, sixteen on it? Twelve?
Seven.
Seven people?
Seven, yeah.
I thought that, every time I, I went out to two or three, it seemed like there's a whole table full of people.
And, and Mayor, that is done by the interlocal agreement?
Okay.
That link NCIC requirements.
And that might be, which is, has to be fifty-one percent of law enforcement.
Fifty-one percent law enforcement.
But the board is, is established by the bylaws and not by the interlocal agreement, which needs to be changed.
But they drove, that kind of drove us a little bit.
The fifty-one percent is-
Fifty-one percent, not always the more law enforcement.
But that's something else that, you and I will, I wanna change this bylaws, change, but what I know still has to be fifty-one for the link, but we need to look at that. Before we go into another interlocal agreement, it, it just needs to be more responsibility, and it needs to be revamped. That's my personal opinion.
I think everybody's in agreement that we want this thing to stay together, just how we make it work, is that-
That sounds good.
That's the way I see it.
Any other comments?
Who drew this letter up? Larry? Did you, was you aware of this letter?
Mm-hmm, it's just something, it's just kind of something rough to throw out there.
Something to talk about.
Something to talk about, it's not, nothing is written in stone, if it was written in stone, it'd be on the lariat.
Okay.
That's just-
I'd say you got a mission accomplished, man.
What's that?
Download.
Download.
Well, I mean, you know, you just, you know, when you're sitting there, and you think you're gonna get a good night's sleep, and you roll over there, and you're making notes on a, on a, on a-
On your hand?
On your hand, or something, yeah, or you, you know, on the leafy pad.
So you're gonna forget it tomorrow morning?
And you lose sleep over this, this is ridiculous.
Welcome to my world, I've been doing that for six months.
Right?
Right there with you.
Coach Eric Williams.
Let's stay on task, yeah, okay.
We're going to the next item, what kind of recommendation?
And, well, the recommendation is that they're going to, the judge executive and the magistrate, they're gonna look over these bullet points here, because it's not really a letter, but bullet point, and, and we're supposed to, we need, how many days do you think you need? I know we weren't trying to do something by January 1, so-
Bullet points?
You're gonna, you're gonna meet with the mayor, and you're gonna, and go line by line.
Something we can both just kind of agree to.
So you guys be on the phone this afternoon.
Coach, the recommendation, it doesn't involve the magistrate, but then, your recommendation, the recommendation lead to the council is to-
Oh, okay.
That the mayor, the mayor-
That the mayor and the judge meet to work on the, this here document.
The short term.
Short, short term document of, of the management of dispatch.
Correct, that'll be correct.
And I didn't mean to put words-
No, that's correct, that's fine, that's fine.
I'm not having this for lunch every day, so.
Chicken, apparently.
Chicken. So anyway, and then, and adding to that, it will be a, I guess it'll bring back a solution, or-
The two, the two of you are going to start with the document first, and then we're gonna go from there.
Right, and then I'll give a full report to the council.
And we realize time is at a test.
You have a meeting Tuesday?
Yeah, the 29th.
The 29th.
It's moved to the 29th, they moved it to the 29th.
Cut the closing.
Well, if we have to have a special meeting-
Yeah.
Or we just have to have one. Anything we can do to extradite this and make it work.
The goal here is to keep it together.
Most certainly. We're all in agreement on that. Okay, all right, there's, we have nothing else to cover, so at this time, I'm gonna say that we adjourn, can I get a motion, please? The first and second, are those in favor? Opposed? We adjourn.